The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council for the month of June. I'd like to ask those of you in attendance to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the joint meeting please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Mr. McCarthy, Board of Finance.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Nick Jones, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Scott Rosato, City Council.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposassou. I'll turn our agenda reading to Consent Calendar, item two. We have several items, A through O, for the Consent Calendar. Does anybody from the Board of Finance or Council like to pull something off for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the Consent Calendar as presented to A through O, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our third item is-
Mayor, can we also have approval of the minutes first?
If you insist, Therese.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular joint meeting on May 14.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Therese.
Okay, and then, actually, I'm not sure I heard a motion for the Consent Calendar also.
Someone made it.
Okay, we're good.
Someone seconded it.
We're good.
Okay. And we voted, right? Okay. Item three, to transfer $576,089.89 of uncollectible taxes, $326,232.28 for motor vehicles, $82,055.48 for supplemental motor vehicle, and $167,802.13 for personal property.
Move.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is to transfer $713,915 from the Equipment Building Sinking Fund contingency account for the purchase of capital outlay. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is to transfer $350,000 within the Capital Nonrecurring Fund to transfer out capital projects. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, to make an additional appropriation of $350,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for environmental engineering at 894 Middle Street.
Move.
Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor?
Yes.
Just how far along are we? Is this the final phase? So that gives them a complete this project?
I'm not sure I would term it the final phase. Does Justin or Dawn want to address this?
We are in the final phases of the remediation. We got held up a little bit, but we should be done by the end of summer, if not sooner. One turtle spotted.
I was going to say, what's the turtle situation?
Yes, one.
One.
He was safely removed to Southington.
Okay. Are there any other questions on where we stand with 894 Middle Street? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the additional appropriation?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is to rescind an appropriation of $18,320 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for the city match of the Homeland Security Grant.
Move.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is to transfer $12,750 from the General Funds Contingency Account to part-time wages.
Move.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item nine is to make an additional appropriation of $12,750 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund for a seasonal part-time Farmers Market Manager.
Move.
Discussion. This was the subject earlier?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Again, we weren't here for that meeting. We could just have Justin explain. When I initially read it, I thought the $12,500 or $12,750 was for one year, but I understand it's for three years, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe Justin could just explain that. I know you're up there.
You're correct. So the, this is a three-year grant, so the numbers from the total, the 51 and even the match, the $12,000 number, it's spread over three years, so if you want to look at it as like a $4,000 and change match each year, but it's a three-year program.
And when you anticipate this person will be working?
Well, we have to get the grant first, and that's a big if, but I think we're, maybe here in September, so that'd be perfect. We could maybe do the onboarding through the fall months and get them in right before we launch next year's Farmers Market.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions concerning the grant for the Farmers Market? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is the discussion and review of the funding of the city's CDBG-funded sidewalk program. This is bubbled up, as it does occasionally, and I just thought it would be good, as a joint meeting, for all of us to sit together, especially for the newer members, to understand the mechanisms of that, especially for those of you who may be on social media. You may have been subject to a great amount of misinformation about this program. So, for those of you who do remember, about eight years ago, we commissioned a West End study report, which was actually one of the better planning and land use reports that I've seen in any community. It was very well done. It laid out a series of priorities, and many departments had pieces of it. And the Bristol Development Authority was noted in several of the requested outcomes to look at infrastructure and investment within that community to the west of us, downtown. And so, they did that. So, through that charge, and I do have the report here, which is still available online, but if you look at page 21, there is a charge within the Recommended Actions category for infrastructure improvement, and charged with that were the Bristol Development Authority and, in conjunction with, the assistance of Public Works Department. So, they took up that charge, as, put in the plan that we paid for, and they started to do the CDBG large sections of sidewalks in the West End. So, that started in 2010, which is when we do think that that probably started, in terms of the project areas. So, the BDA, as all of you know, is a seven-member volunteer commission, and they're the ones that are charged with this policy. Once an area is designated and targeted, which the West End was, HUD will allow you to do any type of different improvements to improve the area. So, the BDA chose to do the sidewalk program, and that is an allowable use because of the reduced income range within that neighborhood that is measurable by the census tracts. So, we also included sections of downtown, and recently, it was the Lower Summer Street area because of the census tract attached to that as well. So, we've designated money for this program for a number of years, and it's a policy decision that starts with the BDA. So, recently, though, it had come under fire due to certain people not understanding, and I think rightfully so, why some households in that area are still paying into the 50% program while others are getting them for free. And I think it was important, and I think that I saw, Dan McCary is here, that there was a referral out of the Commission on Persons with Disabilities, and you're the liaison there, right? That there were people who were having difficulty navigating the sidewalks in wheelchairs, scooters, and other types of people who had disabilities because they were that poorly conditioned on certain areas of Divinity Street. So, in terms of that, in terms of the HUD focus, and in terms of, we as a community are often trying to break that broken glass theory of, if there's certain deteriorated conditions, they tend to spread, as opposed to improvements that tend to spread, we want to cut down on the deterioration. So, that referral came in, it came to Public Works, they applied through that program to BDA for that area to be designated, and through doing that, we not only improved the ability for people to safely transport in that area, but also fixed a rather large section of sidewalk that needed to be fixed. And in doing so, I believe, and I believe is the spirit of the program, is that we enhanced the entire area, as well as the safety issues, the appearance issues, and the property values in general. Because once the entire area starts to deteriorate, everything else follows quickly. So, I think that what this did do, though, with a resident from Talmud Street expressing concerns, was her comments were included in the CDBG comment section that are forwarded to HUD, and I think the BDA Policy Committee will take that issue up in terms of how they interpret it and how they may actually be able to leverage some other benefit for some single-family houses that might want to participate and maybe give them a different rate than we have in other neighborhoods. So, that is something that's very positive that's come out of it, but it is the jurisdiction of the BDA Policy Committee that is chaired by Howard Schmelder, and I would encourage anyone who has any types of target or focus area concerns or interest in improving neighborhoods, especially our neighborhood groups, that that's where they should start, because they're the ones who have jurisdiction.
Mayor, could you just explain the program for the rest of the city, because there are probably some misconceptions about that as well, just the general concept of how that sidewalk program works?
I believe it's a 50-50 reimbursement where the city and the residents split the costs of the identified sidewalks that need replacement. Is that good?
And anyone can apply for that program. There's no income requirements or neighborhood requirements for that. Any city resident can apply to have the sidewalks in front of their home fixed with that program.
Yes. Marie?
So, may I ask this question? Who within the city is responsible for reviewing the condition of certain sidewalks in the regular 50-50 sharing financing program to ensure that our sidewalks are in fact safe and many of them are brought up to new standards?
So, most of that is done within the Public Works Department, although a lot of it is also reported. And so, I think a combination list is created, and it's in our work orders, so all of that gets pulled, and then you're able to take, you're able to segregate addresses, i.e. West End addresses, when the sidewalk program and the HUD focus on the funding, you can pull those addresses out. So, that's one piece of it, but I would have to say that we get a large amount of people calling in, expressing concern over sidewalks, or they find their way to Mr. McCary's commission, or they find their way to my office, and everything gets logged. There is one thing that, it's probably a little premature right now, but the Public Works Director and I have been investigating a program called See It, Click It, Fix It, where it's GPS-enabled, so if you're out walking your dog, you see something, a sign is missing, a sign is down or faded, or sidewalks, you can actually take a picture of it and send it to this, through this application, to City Hall. It automatically gets logged, and then it becomes part of the record. So, from a liability standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint, and as a civic engagement piece, it's something that I think there's very low cost to it if you use the general platform, and I think that that's probably going to be the next phase of what we do in terms of part of what you were asking. Are there any other questions? Okay. Moving on, we will hear from our Controller for her monthly revenue and expense report.
Good evening, everyone. I don't really have too much more to update. I mean, as I've been saying over the last few months, you know, our tax revenues are coming in pretty strong, particularly on the supplemental motor vehicle, building permits, conveyance tax. Our investment earnings are now over $1.2 million, which is very positive, and looking at, you know, we're at the point right now where we're closing out and doing all of the year-end purchases. All the requisitions and purchase orders are pretty much done for this year. What I'm hoping, you know, as I've reported, we know we have a $525,000 shortfall in the ECS grant, and we will have a Board of Ed deficit that we will need to make up. So, when I'm looking at the revenues and some of the other expenditures that the departments might have as surplus at the end of the year, including about an $800,000 contingency, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to end the year balanced with, you know, some sort of a small surplus. And we do need to also cover the Equipment Building Sinking Fund transfer, which you just approved tonight, of $713,000. So, once all of that is said and done, like I said, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to end the year with a balanced budget and cover all of those, the shortfalls and the ECS grant, as well as the deficits on the Board of Ed side. Are there any questions with any of that? Like I said, it's not any different than what I've been reporting, but now, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, we kind of see where everything is kind of falling with the department expenditures and the rest of the revenues, particularly taxes, conveyance tax, building fees, and so forth. No questions? I will let you know, it just seemed like they just left, but the auditors started this week. They will be here this week for the preliminary work. They'll be back in October. We are hopeful that everything is going to run much smoother than last year. If you remember, last year, we had some issues with some of the reports that the state needed for some accounting requirement disclosures, and they were late getting that to all of the auditors. A lot of it was pension and other post-employment benefit related on teachers and the state employees that, well, really, the State Employer Retirement Fund doesn't affect us, but the state teachers does affect our financials. So, there has been a big push from my organization, as well as the auditors and the CPAs that do the audits, to get the state to push to have that to them sooner, so we don't have that delay, because that was very stressful, trying to get the audit done last year. We were up to the last minute waiting to get it from the auditors. Actually, it was more stress on them than us, because they had a lot of audits they had to push out at the last minute. So, we're hopeful, we have a target date of issuance of mid-December right now, so we're hoping that we're going to be able to stick with that. So, my staff and I and the auditors are going to do our best to achieve that, so that's really the update as far as what's going on in the Controller's Office this week or this month. But, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The City Council meeting will convene in three minutes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposassou, and I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my far left.
Far left, that's you.
Scott Rosato, District 1.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
Okay, thank you. Our first item is a moment of reflection, and I'd like to just have everyone silently reflect on the many soldiers representing Bristol who fought in all of the wars and the ones that did not return, as we reflect on everything that happened in our city over the last 10 days for Memorial Day. Thank you. Our second item is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting for May 14th. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For public participation, we have, first, our nonprofit spotlight is our local Quota Club, and it is being represented tonight by Corinne Vines.
Good evening. My name is Corinne Vines, and I'm a past president and the current Community Outreach Chair of Quota International of Bristol. Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight on behalf of our club. Quota International of Bristol is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that was chartered in Bristol in 1941. So, we've been in Bristol over 75 years. If you haven't heard about us, you should. We are part of 219 clubs. There's over 4,000 members internationally, and we exist in 14 countries. Our mission centers around helping disadvantaged women and children, and also the deaf and hard appearing. We have roughly 30 members that are part of the Bristol Club, and they come from surrounding towns as well as Bristol. We are committee-based, and some of our committees are our Blood Drive Committee, where we host with the Red Cross a blood drive annually. Our next one will be August 21st at the Senior Center. We have a Community Outreach and Disadvantaged Women and Children Committee that work closely together. Some of the things that those committees do are make donations to local shelters and food kitchens. We also work and prepare meals at soup kitchens. We recently helped Agape House by shelving for their kitchen and gave them donations of coffee and other needed supplies. We've had recent support to Chippens Hill Middle School for My Cousin's Closet, where they take donations of clothing and gently use sneakers for the children in the school. Also, Edgewood School has reached out to us, and we provided them with clothing as well. We've helped the Parent and Child Center recently. They needed special games for the developmentally challenged children that are there in the waiting room. We've helped the Senior Center. We've bought them film for their senior prom. Salvation Army for backpacks for homeless youth. And a lot of these people reached out to us through the Bristol Cares Meeting that we've recently started participating in. Some of the people that we also like to support are Prudence Crandall Center for Domestic Violence. We do small things for them, such as host baby showers for women that are in the shelters that are expecting. We provide snacks for their silent No More annual vigil. We've also recently helped Jane Doe No More, which is based out of Nagatuck, and they're more of a sexual assault prevention. We mentor children in Cambridge Park, and we reach out through them through the Bristol Boys and Girls Club Power Hour and provide them with healthy snacks as well. One of our members also has been very instrumental in getting all the children bicycles over the summer. And we do back-to-school backpack donations for those not qualified. And this is something where Quota really likes to reach in and do. Maybe they aren't qualified because they missed the deadline, maybe the backpacks were full, maybe the mother just didn't turn in the form in time, so we like to get those type of people under our umbrella and help them. We also have a Hearing and Speech Committee, and you may have seen us at the Bristol Blues game a couple weeks ago. We handed out free earplugs on the night that they had fireworks, and I did bring some along with me, along with some information on our club to hand out. We have a Scholarship Committee. We reach out to Bristol Eastern, Bristol Central, and St. Paul and offer each of the seniors applications to a $1,000 scholarship for those demonstrating values of Quota. We do not look at the highest GPA. We really look at community service and what they're doing as far as demonstrating the values of Quota. And our last committee that we work on is World Service. One of our members is actually from South Africa, and she has connections to an orphanage that we provide snacks and coloring books, books, just things to help the orphanage align. So, we raise money for this through our, for all the committees, through fundraising. We raise all of our own money. Once in a while, we're lucky to get some grants, but generally, it's our members that do that. And our big fundraiser is our fashion show, and we have our 34th Annual Fashion Show coming up at the AquaTurf, and that will be on October 15. So, we do a lot. We can be followed on Facebook if you want to see the good things that we do. That's pretty much how we try and support ourselves. And if anybody wants any more information on the club or is interested in becoming a member, we would love to have more volunteers, and the more people we have, the more we could do. So, if you have any questions, I'm available, and I just wanted to thank you for letting me talk on behalf of Quota International of Bristol.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please thank your club members for all those volunteer hours.
I will. Thank you.
On our public participation signup sheet, we have Logan Williams.
Councilmen and Councilwoman, thank you for offering me the chance to speak tonight. I understand that it is a common occurrence for citizens to speak at these meetings. It's so common that it's almost become procedural. But tonight, I don't want this to be anything close to procedural. I understand that the chance for me to speak is not the same as the chance to be heard, and it is not the same as the chance for each and every one of you to listen. So, I hope that today, my audience is willing to listen with open ears and an open mind, free from any partisan influence. I am 16 years old. People like me, people my age, are the future of this state. They are the future of this town. Tomorrow, each and every one of us will suffer the consequences of failure today. Because of this, I've begun to feel duty-bound, to speak out, to do my part to preserve the beauty of this state for posterity. Bristol's heart and soul has always been centered on the middle class. It's always been centered on the American dream. It is built on the backs of hard-working citizens, of families and children. It is built on the backs of passion and of strength. Our town survived the market crash, but men and women lost their jobs, families lost their homes. Our senior citizens lost their retirements, and everyone has lost their savings. Our town survived the loss of New Departure. It survived the loss of UTC. It will continue to survive the loss of UTC. It's the reality of living in 2019's middle-class America. The absolute last thing Bristol needs is another added cost. Tolls are just that, other added cost. Bristol's citizens are scraping and crawling their way back to our feet. I'm only here to ask for a little bit of time before we are forced to pay another cost. I don't have a car. As I said, I'm 16. I don't have a car. I will not be paying directly into tolls for quite some time. But I will, however, be paying indirectly. As taxes rise for loss of revenue, as businesses leave our state, I will be paying indirectly. I don't plan to leave this state. I plan to stay here. I plan to work here. I plan to raise a family here. However, I have quite a few friends who are leaving this state. They're going to college somewhere else, or getting out as fast as they can. They don't plan to come back. They don't plan to bring their jobs here. They don't plan to bring their families here. They don't plan to raise their children here. And I think that is a tragedy. It is an exodus, people choosing to live their lives in other states, when Connecticut is a beautiful state. At this point, I couldn't possibly care less what party you are, Democrat, Republican, independent, unaffiliated, couldn't care less. Matter of fact, I don't believe most of Bristol's citizens could care at all what party you are. Government is supposed to pick us up in times of crisis. It is not supposed to kick us while we are down. And Bristol's citizens feel like this government, not just this government, but all government, has been kicking them while they have been down. So, today, together as a town, I'm calling upon everyone here to help create a future and a vision designed an opportunity and democracy for Bristol's families. In the name of every citizen in Bristol, old, young, of any race and any creed, I ask each and every one of our representatives today, Madam Mayor, all of the councilmen here, to choose people over politics, to restore our faith in government, to restore my friends' faith in Bristol and in Connecticut. I am asking you, right now, my government, my representatives, to pass a no tolls resolution and truly represent the people of this beautiful town. I am asking you to be our representatives. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is here to speak that did not have a chance to sign up that would like to address the City Council? Okay. We're going to move on to announcements, and for tonight's purposes, we do have our slideshow where it has a lot of information that is also attached to the Nutmeg Broadcast as it's shown throughout the week, but we are going to bifurcate our announcements because we have two that I'd like to take, and then we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the rest of our agenda. But first, I would like to ask the indulgence of the City Council to move item 12, the approval of the letter of intent with tobacco- 20,000 square foot two-story commercial building to the top of the agenda.
All moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So again, similar to when we had Parcel 10 come before us, this is a really exciting night for all of us, knowing that incrementally, we're starting to see activity at Center Square. So I'd like to ask Justin Malley, our Economic Development Director, to come forward and just give a brief overview of what we're dealing with with Parcel 1, Parcel 3, and maybe introduce some of the people associated with the project.
Thanks very much. So, yeah, so here we go. So we, to the mayor's point, we worked on Parcel 10 late last year and I'd actually been working with Bobby Tobacco, his brother Tommy, and Eddie on the possibility of bringing, and Eddie will come up, of bringing Eddie's Restaurant that's currently in Hartford to Bristol. And we had been working on finding an ideal location that works downtown because to Eddie's credit and to Tobacco, they were looking to bring that, you know, Eddie's Restaurant here to downtown. It turned out that we really couldn't find a space that worked, so in talking with Bobby and his brother, the possibility of building something new on Center Square was obviously something that I probably talked about early, but it got to a point where that was what made the most sense for the business and for Tobacco. So the, basically what occurred was we looked at the Center Square property and the piece that made the most sense was what we call Parcel 1. So it's, Parcel 1 is essentially, it hugs the corner of Hope Street and Riverside Avenue. There's an image there, so that's a fairly new site plan draft that Tobacco &amp; Sons Architect brought me yesterday, Charlie Nyberg. So if you look at it there, what we're working on is basically about a 20,000 square foot commercial building, two floors. The first floor would, the majority of the floor space on Level 1 would be devoted to Eddie and his restaurant. There'll be some office space above on Floor Number 2 and then two retail spaces, about 1,500 square feet each, I believe, that would be on Floor 1 as well. So rather than hear me talk, I thought it might make sense to introduce, actually, I want to thank Dr. Scatropici too for being part of this in collaboration with Tobacco &amp; Sons. Eddie, I was hoping maybe you could give your story a little bit and talk about your business and your connection to Bristol. That might be fun.
Hello.
Hello.
Basically, I'm from Bristol. I went to high school at St. Paul. I've gone to school in Boston, had a couple restaurants in New York, came back to Hartford, had a couple restaurants in Hartford with my family. I'm planning on moving back to Bristol and Tobacco came to me with some ideas and I have some more ideas. Look forward to coming here, bringing a Mediterranean restaurant, ethnic restaurant to downtown Bristol, hiring everyone from Bristol and look forward to making you guys happy. Any questions?
Looking forward to having you with us.
Can't wait.
Site plan, I think, is pretty self-explanatory and I think there is, Ellen, did you get the new elevation drawings or whatnot?
Yep, I just passed them out.
Okay, so everybody can see those. Rough design.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what we're looking for is, again, that whole corner, some outside dining and stuff, I think it's part to retail, commercial spaces, basically facing that new hospital building. Did everybody approve? Other than that, it's been a joy now, starting to work with a mayor who wants to get something done, you know, not growing grass. Any questions about the building?
Just for orientation purposes, it's, if you look at the patch, because they want to know where the, you know, a lot of people want to know where this is exactly, so.
Patch is to the left of that outside patio.
That blank white space there?
Yes.
That's the patch.
Yes.
Nothing will go there ultimately, correct?
No, it can't because it goes over the conduit where the river is encapsulated underneath. So some initial thoughts are, is that Mr. Tobacco can incorporate part of it and I think we do bleed onto that parcel a little bit for his sightlines, or we can incorporate a gateway piece there to showcase that corner as it faces Bracket Park. So, but no, no construction can happen there. And if you see, if you head north, you see some of the parking and then beyond that parking lot, the part that is not shown are the rest of the parcels where Hope Street then curves and meets North Main Street. So there's another development potential to the north of this development. And I think over the last four months, I know that some of you are aware of this, but the BDA and the BDA Downtown Committee have been working to discuss some of these issues as you see them. Some of them are some joint parking issues. We have landscaping issues. We have cross-easement for purposes of egress and access and many of those points actually were brought to us by Mr. Tobacco as he was discussing his plan and we found that some of those issues we had not adequately addressed. So we went back to the drawing board and that's why Goman &amp; York has been introduced and we also have a planner working with our planner, because there's a lot of issues now that this is starting to be fleshed out, that the original BD1 and BD2 zones, as it was envisioned, may not apply anymore. So we're going to continue to work on this to make it as business-friendly as possible as we investigate other potential uses for the rest of the site. But with this parcel, the significance of this coming online now, as well as Parcel 10 happening in August, is I think that Justin and I estimated that we're close to maybe 45% with Hope Street, about that of Center Square completely committed. So I think that this is between these three, Parcel 10, this one and the hospital, I think they're going to be major catalysts for some really positive economic development down here, never mind Better Half Brewery across the street and some of our, you know, our really great businesses that have been here for a long time.
I have a question through the chair. The parking that is pictured north of the building in this picture, is that part of, shall we call it, tobacco property envisioned? Or is that something that the city would still own and that would be a joint parking for presumably this parcel and one north of it?
It's part of, yeah, go ahead.
The way we're working on it now would become part of this parcel that we developed.
Okay.
Those are issues again, like that Ellen had just talked about, that we're still have to work out some of the cross-easement stuff, some of the paperwork and how things are going to happen have not been designed previously. So Ellen and the board is trying to straighten this stuff out now so we can keep going. But there is no answer yet, that's what we're working on.
Okay. But he needs that parking to support his activities for that building. And if you look at the bottom, you will see the.
Per zoning regulations.
So we also have the beginning of what is the Riverside Avenue streetscape. You will see some of those parking, the parallel parking spots that are in. For, you'll remember that we've done the Malona McBroom contracted amendment already, that they're going to be designing that streetscape for Riverside Avenue and part of that is so that we can have additional parking. This is, for those of you in the audience, this is the streetscape rendering of what the conceptual, of what the building could look like. And there would be parking in front of.
And this would be like, you're standing on Riverside Avenue looking at it?
Yes. So the patch would be to your left.
Now, the parking area itself also, what Charlie did not design, it is designed with less parking than we're supposed to have, to give you more parking to build and use the street parking also. Not reserved for the building, but used by, you know, people.
Correct. It can count because it's.
Well, I'm not saying count, but it's there. Usable space.
Yep. So again, we don't want to recreate the center mall scenario of just having acres and acres of asphalt. We want it to be a built-looking downtown and I do think that this accomplished this very nicely.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I have one question. I see the parking lot and the space itself, does any of that encroach on the Parcel 3, which is just north of it? Or is that all contained in just Parcel 2?
I'd have to look at a map.
Well, that's Parcel 2.
I believe it's Parcel 1.
Yeah.
And to Justin, I don't know about.
So to answer your question, the design, so again, this is a draft site plan, right? So, and that was a draft elevation shot that you saw, but as it's laid out currently, it does, the parking extends a little bit into Parcel 3 actually, happens to be next door. But that's sort of the beauty in how we lay this out. We worked with Public Works to re-subdivide the property so that lot lines can be sort of easily manipulated depending on the development, because we don't know what we don't know. We don't know what we're going to get. So we set ourselves up, and this is Ray's suggestion and Public Works, so that we can sort of easily manipulate property lines to accommodate development. Just from a process standpoint, I just wanted to make sure, I talked about in the summary, but the more we can talk about it, the better. The way this, we kind of found our path now from a process standpoint and the way it basically works is staff work directly with developers in the beginning, because there's a lot to go through. There are technical issues and we work with Public Works and others as far as site plan and the layout, but there's also issues about what's going to be on the site, right? And we know what the community would like to see, so we have to be sort of calculated in that. So there's a lot of work at the staff level. We don't want to bring projects to the BDA and then to the council that don't make any sense, right? We know what the community wants, so it takes a little time. So that's what we've done here is we have preliminary designs, but in reality, what you're voting on tonight is step one, really. It allows the letter of intent to be executed. That takes the property off the table for anyone else and it gives it exclusively to Mr. Tobacco and his team, right? Because he needs that exclusivity to go through the land use process, right? So there's a lot more to go, right? We have to fine-tune that site plan, work with Charlotte, work with the engineers to get to a point where they can be approved by our planning commission, our land use boards, right? So what is done tonight allows Mr. Tobacco and his team to expend more resources and to go down this road together with us, right? So it's really just step one. The purchase-sale agreement is at the end of this. But what you're doing tonight is important because it doesn't make sense without that letter of intent executed for Mr. Tobacco, for Eddie and for their team to continue to expend resources and money on this. Now they know it sort of makes sense and the piece of property won't be sold out from under them or anything like that. So it's important for them that this happened tonight.
Fantastic. Through the chair, just a little inside information if possible. Eddie mentioned that he had a restaurant in Hartford. Can you give us any clue as to what it is and the type of food that they have and maybe what might happen here?
Yeah, it's an Italian restaurant. They do everything homemade. We do game food too as well to order. We have a lot of people that come from Bristol there.
What's the name of it?
Francesco's. It's on Franklin Avenue. Been there over fifteen years.
Very good.
We do from pasta dishes to quail to pheasants to, you know, veal, chicken, you know.
No samples tonight?
Excuse me?
No samples?
Yeah, they're in the car. Waiting for the meeting to be over, absolutely. Anyways.
Meeting to, okay.
I look forward, everything's, I want an open kitchen, you know, I like to do things like we do at home. So everything is made to order. When you order, it's going to take, I always tell our customers, it takes time. Everything's made at that time. There's nothing pre-made.
Very good.
You know, that's.
Thank you.
Very well.
There are a few of us in the audience who have been to Francesco's. You can raise your hand if it was a good meal. Yep, see, there you go. Great dining experience.
Anything else?
Are there any other questions for the developer? Okay.
Thank you.
So then, without further ado, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and please reflect for the record that Councilman Proleski is abstaining from this vote.
And who made the motion?
Did you make it or did you second it?
I, no, I.
Nobody did.
Mary? You did something.
I'm motion.
Mary and Dave.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and on behalf of the City Council and the BDA, we look very forward to working with you over the next few months. Thank you. Okay. The next item that I'd like to take up under announcements is the fact that we have a department head who has decided to retire and I'd like to take a moment to recognize Eileen McNulty, the Director of Youth and Community Services, who is ending a very productive 30-year career with the city of Bristol. Eileen, stand up, Eileen, hello. Okay. Okay. So this doesn't happen every day and so we wanted to just take a quick five-minute break so everyone can express their thanks and gratitude to Eileen for a career well-served and we do have some refreshments in the meeting room, so I'm going to ask for a motion to recess.
All moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. If everybody would just like to take a moment to thank Eileen and you can bring cupcakes back into the council chambers. There are thirty of them to represent her 30 years of service. And also for those of you who may have come late, if you'd like to sign the card, we do have a, something there for her as well. Thank you.
Go.
Okay. Zach, we're ready? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to come back into session.
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to resume with Agenda Item 4 with announcements starting on my far left. Any announcements, Councilwoman Rosato?
Yes, I have one. I know that June 22nd is going to be a very busy day here in Bristol because of the farmer's market kickoff and the tours of the Bristol facility, but there's also, there's a new bike path, bike trail that's being created in Rockwall Park. And on the 22nd of June, you can get up before you go to the farmer's market and spend some time working on the trail, if you would. They're having a workday at the trails. They'd like to get as many people as they can. It's going to be some significant work. If you've been over there at all as yet, they've already made some great progress, but they're going to have a workday. It's going to be the 22nd of June, it starts at eight o'clock. And it's, if you go over by Putnam Street, I don't know what the name of that street is over there.
Putnam, Mel's and Charmin.
Yeah, but what's the, no, but what's the name of the park, the street that's in the park? Is it North Rockwall or something, whatever it is.
Steel.
It's off of Steel Road, yeah. But whatever the name of the street is, that's where you're driving and just look for all the people. Starts at eight o'clock and again, if you have someone you'd like to bring with you, they're doing a terrific job and it's just an amazing project that was started in December and hopefully they want to have it done in July. Totally unheard of in government that something happened in six months. So again, they're very excited. It's, they've done a terrific, terrific job over there. So that's what I have.
None, thank you.
I have one, Your Honor. This was brought to my attention by the mayor today, hot off the presses, on the Bristol Water Department Facebook page. Our director of the water department is at a conference in Colorado today and this is what he posted to Facebook. The Bristol Water Department would like to send a huge congratulations to Cassidy Yates, who received a $5,000 scholarship today at the American Water Works Association Annual Conference. Cassidy, a Bristol native, took a tour of our water treatment plant in sixth grade. Upon graduating high school, Cassidy reached out to Superintendent Robert Longo, asking if she could shadow one of our employees to get a better understanding of the water industry before going to college. Cassidy spent a day with Assistant Superintendent Dan Bolduc at the plant and Dan covered some of the day-to-day responsibilities of a water treatment operator, along with the many different employment opportunities in the water industry. Assistant Superintendent Bolduc later introduced Cassidy to a colleague who was looking for an intern in the water industry. Cassidy interned with Aquarian Water Company in Western Connecticut while also pursuing a degree in engineering at the University of New Hampshire. Today in Denver, Colorado, Cassidy was recognized by Mueller Water Products and awarded their prestigious Mueller Continuing Education Scholarship. We were happy to watch Cassidy walk across the stage to receive her award during the water industry luncheon attended by over 1,000 water professionals from around the world. Congratulations again, Cassidy Yates, for your achievement in representing Bristol.
What a great story.
That is great.
100 people across the country and Bristol's one of them. My only announcement is a last-minute agenda, a last-minute community event on the agenda and it is next Monday, June 17th. 100 people across the country and Bristol's one of them. My only announcement is a last-minute agenda, a last-minute community event on the agenda and it is next Monday, June 17th. Bristol will be hosting its first-ever pride flag raising out front in between the police department and city hall at 6:45 and everyone is invited to join us. And following that, we will be having a community conversation at Sabadi Restaurant for anyone who's interested in joining us. Okay. And at this point, I will turn the calling of the agenda over to our town and city clerk for consent.
There are eight items on the consent calendar.
Does anybody wish to pull any items off?
Through the chair, I'd like to pull item D off.
Okay, the Superior Electric actions. Anything else? Okay. So is there a motion to approve item 5A through H with the exception of D?
All moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion for the consent calendar. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Fortier.
Thank you. Item D is to authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents required for corrective action sediment removal and restoration by the former Superior Electric Company at the city's Pine Lake Recreation Facility. First of all, I want to let folks know a little bit of the background here because we all know that Superior Electric doesn't exist anymore, but their parent company still does and we're very happy that they're doing what they're supposed to do and taking responsibility for some of the pollution and issues that their manufacturing process caused over the years. So they're in the beginning stages of figuring out, they've done a lot of testing of the soils, some of which impact the Pine Lake area and some are on private property, but they're going to be going through a permitting process for exactly how they're going to do that process. And they've made this preliminary presentation to the Pine Lake Committee, the Park Board, and they've been working with the Public Works Department and our engineers. And I just want folks to know that if they're interested in this, there will be other opportunities at the different, various public hearings when this goes before our land use boards. But we are very excited that they're doing what needs to be done to get rid of the pollution and the things that have contaminated the soils around Pine Lake.
So your report was in a form of a motion to authorize?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the work that is happening in that corridor and specifically at Pine Lake? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll start with Real Estate Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. This motion I have is referred to the City Council from the Real Estate Committee. I hereby move that the city of Bristol enter, enter an exclusive right to sell listing a contract with Keller Williams Realty for the property known as Lot 6, 7, and 8, Witchies Rock Road, Bristol, Connecticut. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Counsel's Office to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Still you, Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Your Honor. With regard to the, an update on the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, the committee held a community, community update last week, which was well-attended and we received a lot of positive feedback on the presentation and the plans. There were also many interesting questions. Those questions and other frequently asked questions will be posted on the committee's website and that for the city of Bristol very, very soon. Anybody has any questions can contact me or anyone on the committee. The State Historical Preservation Office has the conceptual design drawings under its review and is exchanging comments with our architect at present. The mayor is scheduled to attend a meeting shortly to ensure that the State Historic Preservation Office clearly understands the community connection to the building and it's, it's our interest in preserving its facade as well as improving its functionality. The Memorial Boulevard School was recently featured, by the way, in a publication, in a publication from the Connecticut Preservation News for March, April of 2019 and they highlighted what we're doing at the school. So that's available online as well. The next committee meeting will be held this Thursday at the Board of Ed at 6:30. Thank you, Your Honor.
Are there any other committee reports, starting on my far left?
Yes. I just want to mention from the Police, Board of Police Commissioners, congratulations to Lieutenant Guerrero for being promoted to captain. We're sure he will continue to work hard and be an asset to our police department in his new position. The Bristol Police Department would like to thank the community for their support in the tip a cop fundraiser for Special Olympics. Together, everyone's efforts raised over $2,100. And in conjunction with the fundraiser on June 6th, they had the Special Olympics torch run through the city, which was kind of exciting to see. For the Board of Park Commissioners, I'd like to thank the Park Department for the preservation of the Eagle Monument located on the Boulevard in the Veterans Memorial Park. Their fast response and attention to detail was greatly appreciated by all in order to have it completed before the Memorial Day procession in which crowds gathered to honor our World War II veterans as they received their Bristol All-Hard Award from Mayor Zappo Sassu, Commissioner Sadi, and members of the Bristol Veterans Council. Bristol Parks and Recs has been a very, has been very active in a wide, with a wide variety of events going on this summer. Please visit www.bristlerec.com for further details. Some events that may be of interest are as follows. The Celebrating a Life Memorial Tree Program, which allows family members to honor a loved one by planting a tree in their memory. The Summer Concerts, which will begin on June 25th, are held every Tuesday from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Rockwell Amphitheater. There won't be any concerts on the week of July 4th. Davey Stole My Thunder with the Trails Build a Day, that'll be on June 22nd, again, 8:30 to 3:00 PM at the new Rockwell Mountain, Rockwell Park Mountain Bike Trails. Families are encouraged to join us and lend a hand in the formation of this exciting new park. Summer programs such as day camp, swim lessons, arts and crafts, as well as the schedule of hours for the Rockwell and Page Park pools. Again, please visit www.bristlerec.com to see a complete list of activities that'll be sure to make your summer complete. For the Commission on Aging, they'll be hosting an outdoor concert and art show on June 23rd from 3:00 to 6:00. This event will be held at the Bristol Senior Center located at 240 Stafford Avenue. There is no charge for this event. For the Bristol Veterans Council, on June 1st, Bristol Veterans Council held their ninth annual salute dinner, which recognized all the young men and women who choose to join the armed forces or attend one of our nation's military academy. Their commitment to protect all of us should never go unnoticed and we wish them a safe journey in their future. For the Bristol Youth Commission, as we seen earlier this evening with the retirement of Eileen McNulty, I'd just like to acknowledge her retirement. I commend her on her time and dedication she put forth to our community, the youth and the families. She'll be greatly missed and I'd like to wish her best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Councilman Mills?
Yes, sir.
Any more from you?
Thank you.
Committee reports.
None from me, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor. In working with the City Arts and Culture Commission, I've been asked to bring forward a few of the things that they've been working on. Sometimes the things that happen in committee are lost without these kinds of an announcement. So we're, we're proud to be a sponsor for the upcoming summer concert that Councilman Rosato mentioned over at the Senior Center. So we're working with the Commission on Aging on that. We're also teaming up with the Parks Department to add live and interactive art to the first concert of the Summer Rockwell Park Concert Series, as you heard earlier, dated on, on June 25th. The Commission also has used its database. We collected a database of names of artists and performers and we've been asked several times to provide names and in this particular case, we connected our local artists with the new downtown medical center for artwork in their facility. So we connected area artists there. We also lined up music for all the summer farmer's markets, which will run from June to November. The Commission will also be unveiling public arts projects within the city parks as well as two downtown public arts projects in the near future and you'll be hearing more of those soon. So as the Commission grows and evolves, their aim is to bring different facets, facets of the arts and culture to the city. So they're a very busy organization. The next, we have the Energy Commission. Chair Sean Dunn mentioned that they're looking, currently working with the state to review existing funding options to create a green bank. And what this is, is it's a, an account where small percentages of savings from energy efficiency efforts go into the green bank to fund future energy efficiency projects, so a self-funding mechanism. They're looking to use Munis system to classify energy-related work in the city budgets. The goal is to assess every budget to gauge the value of the energy projects and, and have a portion of those savings go to the green bank. They're also taking in proposals currently, they're searching for a company to help with refunds to the city and overages to electrical, natural gas and other bills. We seem to, may have an opportunity to bring in some refunds and so we're, we're going to look at that. And again, the potential source of funding for the energy green bank for energy efficiency projects. They're working on Earth Day and related school events. They promote the reduce, reuse and recycle to save energy, focus on take-two electronic recycling, clothing recycle and K through eight level yields money back to the schools and high schools are creating videos for topic presentations to K through eight. It's a very talented and busy committee and so I'm, I'm very proud to be working with them, people so knowledgeable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I have two. Public Works and Early Childhood and Board of Education, I'll combine those two. First, Public Works, the city of Bristol Public Works Department is going to be collecting your used unwanted books and in Week 1, they have collected 187 pounds of books, which is more than I weigh, it's probably about what you weigh, Tom, right? And that did not go to the landfill. So 37 pounds of books will be used in the Park and Rec Summer Camp Literary Program. And the collection bin is located at the Public Works Office, the ground floor of City Hall. Early Childhood, the mayor and myself attended at Stafford School one night, One Purpose, which is a kindergarten parent orientation. And this was held on May 29th and it was a, really a huge success. It was held at all six elementary schools in two K to eight schools. And at Stafford School, the presentation was videotaped by Tom Mazzarella of Mazzarella Media, Inc. And you'll be able to see that on the Facebook page of Making Bristol Better. That's primarily for the parents that weren't able to make it. And here are some of the numbers as they relate to the presentation. There were 338 incoming kindergarten students who visited their new schools, had a chance to greet their teachers. 52 community volunteers worked during the session, welcoming people, handing out surveys and the like. 595 family members and parents attended and 104 parents volunteered to help advocate for young children, working in conjunction with the School Readiness Council and the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance. And the night was not only educational, but I had to think that it was calming and reassuring to parents that may have been leaving their children for the first time in the care of, in, in most cases strangers, very reassuring how coordinated everything was. And it was just a great job from the head custodian, giving a speech at Stafford, all the way up to the new superintendent and everyone in between. So it, it was a coordinated effort, nice to see. And in addition, there, it can't be announced yet, but Chief Gould, I'm not quite sure why the police chief picks the raffle to win a fire truck ride to school, but you know, that's the way it works.
The fire chief is wondering that as well.
But they're not going to announce the winner. They're going to have you go to, once again, the Facebook page of Making Bristol Better to find out who that lucky child is. Also, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Catherine Carbone, who I referenced earlier, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Michael Dieter. We're just very fortunate to have two dynamic skilled educators of, of their skill set and they're really going to make a great team. And once again, we're just very fortunate, they're very able administrators. And finally, last but not least, Marcy DeShane is Bristol's 2019, 2020 Teacher of the Year. She's a veteran teacher of 17 years, currently at Mountain View Elementary School and she teaches the third grade there. And she will represent Bristol in the statewide Teacher of the Year competition. And Mrs. DeShane's mantra is be kind, work hard and keep improving. And she puts these words to action by involving her students with Meridian Senior, Meridian Tower Senior Apartments. She also orchestrated a 2012 STEAM Day, which is, she was ahead of her time, you know, sensing how in vogue STEAM is now. And she also works in conjunction with Home Depot and she's built and raised garden beds. I'm not quite sure what those are, but I'm not that, that oriented in the school's courtyard. And I had the privilege of sitting with Marcy recently at a staff award dinner and she, along with her husband Jim, is also a teacher. So it's plain to see, they, they were talking about parenting, not as much about teaching, a little bit, but I'm quite sure that good parents make great teachers and they're both very committed people, very impressive and they help weave the fiber of the Bristol community to be what it is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. I just have a brief item from the opioid task force. One of the bills that the task force was tracking, which is going to make less work for the ordinance committee, is that the state did raise the age to purchase tobacco products to 21, which we were thrilled about and I believe that goes into effect soon. I'm not sure if it's a July 1st or an October 1st date. So that was something we've been tracking. We are continuing to do our PSAs in the gas stations and we are thinking about doing a roundtable at Nutmeg with some of our key stakeholders to talk about what's happening in Bristol. We are also doing additional Narcan training and we are talking about pairing that with some suicide prevention workshops as well. And we're continuing to have the conversation that insurance continues to be the major barrier in terms of seeking treatment and staying in recovery. We've already done our first reprint of our Bristol's community's response to the opioid crisis and they are also being distributed within the police department. And that's it for that. Moving on to unfinished business, the downtown update, a lot of those items have already been talked about, but people should watch for the June 22nd announcement. We have the farmer's market back across the street. It is also going to incorporate the electronics recycling, which we had last year. And this first farmer's market, weather permitting, will also have the trash to treasure. In our attempts to divert products out of the waste stream so that we're not paying fees at Covanta, we have collected items that could be reused and they will be brought to that first farmer's market and people who are Bristol residents can come and claim those items. And Bristol Health is coordinating their community open house for the same day as the farmer's market is closing. You can end there and walk over across the parcel and see the new hospital building. For charter revision, we do have something on the agenda for the public hearing, but I just wanted to remind everybody, the items include technical changes from personnel to Human Resources Director, taking the zoning commission clerk piece of the chief building official's job description and striking it, reverting to an appointed city treasurer position and making three different section updates to the police department chapter to bring it in sync with what's current practice, as well as scooping up some of the sewer and water consolidation items that we missed the first time in Section 48A therein. So we will take up the public hearing under item 15. Does anybody else have any unfinished business for tonight? Okay, moving on to our new business items, we do have good news in terms of the legislative. We received a little bit more money, 2% more than last year, and they made some significant changes to how we're going to be able to do business. The minimum budget requirement for local public education was modified to our benefit. I serve- We received a little bit more money, 2% more than last year, and they made some significant changes to how we're going to be able to do business. The minimum budget requirement for local public education was modified to our benefit. I served on the CCM's Language Board for the Post Traumatic Stress Disorder, benefits for police and firefighters, that passed as well. Our local motor vehicle tax is going to remain as is with no changes, and they are also going to be using part of the state budget surplus, I think it was about $380 million, to shore up the teachers' pension fund, and we, the cities, did not have to pay into that, which was one of the original proposals. And they also banned plastic bags, which was something that we'd been looking at locally as well. And then I did want to draw people's attention to the fact that there is enabling legislation now that we can form a not-for-profit land bank to acquire blighted properties and properties that are in need of remediation. So, that is going to be huge in terms of how we implement that, especially with some of our brownfields and blighted areas. So, all of that is good news, and we're going to continue to monitor some of the financial aspects. But as of right now, we received about $1 million, or approximately 2% more, in state funding, mostly on the education side, than we did last year. Item B, naming protocol. I wanted to bring this to the attention of the City Council because we don't have a clear-cut policy on this. It had been raised at Park Board about how to name something after someone, and because we don't codify our policies when we take votes, you either have to go to the Corporation Council's office, where there is apparently a September 17th, 1988 opinion, probably written by Attorney Lacy. Were you around in 1988?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Or you have to go through the charter, and so specific in 43(c) of the charter, there is language for Park Board and how they have the authority to give proper designating names. Therese, our town and city clerk, pointed out that there's some ethical implications in terms of our ethics ordinance that we would need to be aware of, and so we're kind of at a point where I think we probably need some type of formal action. I just don't know where to refer it, because it just seems like it's a lot of work to go all over the place. And we ran into this with our military policy, that there were all kinds of different pieces of that strewn across various departments that we had to go reconstruct. So, it's really just on for food for thought. I don't know if it's an ordinance necessarily, but we don't really have any place to collect and codify these types of things. And it pops up every once in a while, and then we all tend to look at each other. So, I think it's something that we need to think about, but we can bring that up at another time.
Just excuse me if I may, and just in regards to, obviously, I was one of the people that brought up something for naming rights. They wanted to do something for John Floyd.
Right.
And the school said they couldn't do it, so I guess education must have a policy, I think, although it's somewhat vague, and obviously, they'd like to do something with the city, so. If we could, I'd like to get that taken care of, so that, I thought we were given the insurance that we could do something this fall.
They have the authority. The Park Board has the authority, and I think, weren't they leaning toward the Page Park Cross Country Route?
Yes, exactly.
Right.
I think I can clarify that, Councilman Mills. I believe it's the waiting period that we're waiting for, and I believe Mr. Floyd will become eligible to have the course named for him in October. And I think that worked out with his family from Georgia as well. So, I can confirm that.
Timeline according to who?
According to the Park Board.
They said they had to wait a certain amount of time for ethics.
Yeah, and I believe it's up in October.
Okay.
So, we can confirm that.
Okay. Yeah, so just, we need to figure that out. So, we'll just keep it on for now, but if everybody can just think about it. And if, Peter, as the Board of Ed liaison, can you ask them if they have a policy, and maybe we can look at it? Okay, and then we're up to resignations.
Are no resignations.
Okay, so then we're up to appointments, which hopefully, oh, I did bring it up. Okay. So, we have two reappointments to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. The first is Ruth Ann Graham for a three-year term, and Dan Macari for a three-year term, both to June of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Housing Code Appeals Board to appoint Alan Marco to replace Charles Dowling, alternate member, for a three-year term to June 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And there is still a vacancy on the Housing Code Appeals Board that requires an independent, unaffiliated, or a Republican. So, if anybody's interested, they can contact my office. School Readiness is an appointment to reappoint Valerie Pelletier for an unexpired term to August of 2020.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Youth Commission to appoint Noah Taylor to replace Joy Harris, a Section 2-9 resignation. She is, he will be the under-21-year-of-age representative replacing her. It is an unexpired term to March of 2021. He is an incoming sophomore at Bristol Central.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next three are reappointments to the Youth Commission. They are Matthew Gatawala, representing the Police Department, Lance Washington, a citizen member, and Tanya Ledesma, a citizen member, all for three-year terms to June of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Commission to reappoint Michael Mazzarelli for a three-year term to June of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Finance to reappoint Jake Carrier for a four-year term to June of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, to reappoint John Smith for your term to June of 2023. Were you getting nervous, John, that I held you to the end?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that is it for appointments. Do you want to take it from here?
Certainly. Approval of discontinuance of a portion of Willis Street from Memorial Boulevard to South Street, 660 feet, subject to retaining easements for all public utilities, and continuing the conversation with representatives from the Barnes Group to ensure all their needs are met.
So moved.
Second.
I thought you were talking about zoning commission only. Okay, we are going to withdraw this item because we are still working on some of the logistical pieces.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to withdraw Item 11 from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And just as a housekeeping item for Number 12, we have endorsed the concept as presented under announcements, but I do need someone to make a motion that I'm authorized to enter into and execute a letter of intent to purchase Parcel 1 and a portion of Parcel 3 Center Square by Tobacco and Sun Builders, Inc., subject to the review of the Office of the Corporation Council.
So, second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Han and seconded by Councilman Fortier. All in favor?
Aye.
What abstention?
One abstention for the record from Councilman Proleski. Okay, moving on to Item 13.
Resolution regarding approval of 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. And there is a resolution to read, Your Honor?
I have that, Your Honor. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, as approved by the Bristol Development Authority on May 20th, 2019, is hereby approved, and that the mayor, acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to this grant, including final agreements, and to submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Be it further resolved that the annual action plan be referred to the Board of Finance for action regarding the appropriation of funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Roll call vote starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Resolution's adopted.
Item 14, Resolution Regarding Approval of the List of Program Applications to Obtain Benefits Under the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program.
And, Your Honor, actually, did you give your vote on the last?
The last one, I voted yes.
Yes, okay.
Is there a?
Resolution, yes. Resolution on 14.
I'll read it. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the list of program applications is approved by the Bristol Development Authority on May 20th, 2019, to obtain benefits under the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program, is hereby approved, and that the mayor, acting mayor, is authorized to submit such applications and any and all other documents relating to the Neighborhood Assistance Act to the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue and Services.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, a roll call vote starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 And I'm going to abstain from this vote. Okay. All right. Item 15 is to schedule the public hearing, and we have decided that that date is going to be Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 6:30 p.m., and an agenda will be forthcoming. No action necessary. Do we need to schedule it?
You may want to just say you approved it. It's not, I don't know that it's required.
Okay, so a motion to approve the date as presented?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have one item. It is a resolution that we need for the EverSource easement on Center Square. I'd like to ask for a vote to bring that onto the table under Item 16, any other business.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. And now we have a resolution to read.
Resolved that the City of Bristol grant and convey to the Connecticut Light and Power Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, a corporation chartered by the General Assembly of the State of Connecticut, and having its principal office in the town of Berlin in the State of Connecticut, its successors and assigns permanent rights for the installation, maintenance, and repair of electric and gas lines over, under, and across land of the City of Bristol, situated in the City of Bristol and State of Connecticut, as set forth in the proposed easement presented to this meeting, which is hereby ordered, filed with the records of this meeting, and resolved that Ellen Zappo Sasso, the mayor of the City of Bristol, be and she hereby is authorized to execute and deliver in the name of the City of Bristol an easement presented to this meeting, and to do any and all other acts to effectuate the foregoing.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, a roll call vote starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 And the chair votes yes. Okay, moving on to our addenda, we have one item to amend the contract with Manafort Brothers Incorporated for $110,999.97 for a revised total of $1,497,748.17, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said contract amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With me?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Bristol's farmer's market has been a staple of the Bristol community for several years. The season will begin in June and run through October. Products range from farm-fresh vegetables, fruits, and products from local farms, to homemade beef jerky, to baked goods, coffee, maple syrup, and other locally-made treats. One of the original farm vendors, Gressik Farms, will be returning again to the Bristol Farmer's Market. We recently spoke with Henry Gressik about his family's farm and his participation at Bristol's Farmer's Market.
I enjoy participating in the Bristol Farmer's Market because I get to connect with the end user of the products that we grow. Seeing the end user and sending them away happy with something that I grew inspires me to continue on farming with my family.
For more information on Bristol's Farmer's Market, you can find us on all social media platforms and at www.bristolallheart.com.